The Waterloo City Council, Monday, April 18th. Meeting, roll call please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here. Can I have, uh, let me have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, this evening, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Wilder or three councilors.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed, as well as the minutes of the April 4th, 2022 regular session as proposed.
Second. All right, we have a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. First up, mayor is gone today, so in good reason, with all of the proclamations that we have today. First up, we're gonna do, um... Soil and wastewater. Oh, not wastewater, water stewardship. Okay. How about you, I'll have you stand over here. That's what mayor does, so I'm gonna have to emulate that. So, thanks Jerry, appreciate that. So, uh, I'm gonna read this, gotta change a couple of words for, for this, but, uh, so, "City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas healthy fertile soil and clean water is the lifeblood of nutrition and sustenance throughout the world, and so conservation is a benefit to everyone, and whereas effective conservation practices ensure soil, water, animals, plants, and air can provide a rich standard of living, and whereas our survival and continued production and access to quality food and water depends upon a robust management of diverse natural resources nationwide, and whereas stewardship calls upon every individual to help conserve these precious resources to ensure their prosperity for generations to come, now therefore, I, Ray Foyce, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through May 1st, 2022, as Soil and Water Stewardship Week." And I'm gonna let you talk. Tell us a little bit about it, please.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Thornsberry, and I serve as the Chair of the Blackhawk Soil and Water Conservation District. We are five elected citizens, and Russ Wright is a farmer out in the county, Kristy Heflemeyer Farms, Jenny Trent works at U&amp;I, and doing composting, which is quite important in improving our water quality. And then we have Vern Fish, who used to be the Blackhawk County Conservation Manager, Executive Director, I guess. And we are supported by Jenna Curran as our Secretary, and Schaefer Ridgway works at the Natural Conservation Resources Services. He's a federal employee, but we have this odd partnership. And we have done so many conservation practices in the county. In Dry Run Creek, which is in Cedar Falls, we're lucky because we have an urban project, and we're trying to clean up Dry Run Creek, and every time we get a little ahead of ourselves, then there's more development in the city, and so more work is needed. We have a big project out in Miller Creek, southern part of the county, and we're really proud of this. The percentage of Iowa farm ground that has cover crops in it, on it, is 2%. Miller Creek, 20%. So, we are really making a difference to improve not only our soil health, but our water quality. And another part that is often misunderstood is water quantity. Cover crops and other conservation practices help with flooding. So, we're, we're doing our best to make a go of it in this ever-changing climate that we're experiencing at the moment. Cover crops help hold the soil and all this wind we've had these last months. It does.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. I appreciate that. Thanks for all your work and efforts.
My goodness. Oh, gosh. Oh, take a proper one. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Please do it, Dave.
All right, now you, we're gonna have to do a selfie here, so Jerry, or, sorry, Paul. You wanna come, you're up next, yeah. Arbor Week. Well, you'll have to wait just a second. All right, next up, recognizing Arbor Week. We have Paul up here. Uh, all right, "City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas trees provide a pleasing environment in Waterloo for the benefit of our residents and visitors, contributing greatly to our positive image, and whereas the optimum reforestation of Waterloo will require public participation and cooperation resulting in an attractive community, and whereas the management of trees increases the benefits to our community through planting, maintenance, timely removal, and replacement, and whereas the Iowa Legislature has designated the last Friday in April as Arbor Day throughout Iowa, now therefore, I, Ray Foyce, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through 30th, 2022, as Arbor Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and encourage all citizens of Waterloo to celebrate this occasion and the beauty of our city by planting a tree." Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just, I have a few comments from our city forester slash park superintendent Ted Durfield. He wants to let everyone know that the Plant Waterloo program is going on again. We have 210 quality trees that are available to Waterloo residents at a discounted rate of $20 per tree with a two-tree limit. So, we have a few, most of them are sold now, but we have just a few left, Ohio Buckeyes and Thornless Honey Locust. Give us a call at 291-4370 at our office if you're interested. They're, they're very nice trees at a very good price. And then another thing we've got going this year is, uh, South Hills, we're doing a planting of 25 trees, and they'll be planted with funds from Mid-American Energy. I failed to mention, the earlier program is funded by the Young Family Foundation. But Mid-American Energy is funding the planting of 25 trees at South Hills Golf Course. We lost a lot of ash trees with the Emerald Dash Bore there, and this will help to replenish some of those. So, we encourage anyone and everyone in Waterloo to plant a tree during Arbor Day. If you do choose to plant a tree along the right-of-way near the city, or on the city right-of-way, you need a permit from Leisure Services. Same phone number as before. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Bike Month. This is Mike Knapp here. Mike. All right, Mike, good to meet you. All right, so, "City of Waterloo proclamation, whereas Waterloo has been designated a bike-friendly community, a complete streets community, and has adopted the City of Waterloo Bicycle Master Plan, whereas the City of Waterloo in cooperation with surrounding Cedar Valley communities maintains a beautiful trail system, and whereas Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective is an active part of our growing community of bicycle enthusiasts, and whereas in 1956, the League of American Wheelmen designated the month of May as National Bicycle Month, and whereas bicycling is not only a recreational activity, but an aerobic exercise leading to greater fitness and health, as well as an energy-saving, economical, environmentally-friendly method of transportation, now therefore, I, Ray Foyce, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bike Month, May 1st, 2022, as National Ride a Bike Day, May 16th through 22nd, 2022, as Bike to Work Week, May 18th, 2022, as National Ride of Silence, and May 20th, 2022, as National Bike to Work Day in Waterloo, and encourage our citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and to participate in bicycling activities for recreation, transportation, fitness, and improve health during the month of May, as well as throughout the year." So, Mike, would you like to tell us a little bit about activities, other activities that are going?
Okay. Wanted to thank the, uh, the mayor and you and the rest of the city council for, um, this proclamation. We are, I'm Mike Knapp, I'm President of the Cedar Valley Bicycle Collective. We're a nonprofit organization, and we recycle discarded bicycles in our metro area. We, we keep about 10,000 pounds of bicycles out of the public landfills each year, and we help promote cycling as a recreational and an alternative to transportation within our community, and, uh, we are really thankful for, um, to the city recognizing May as National Bike Month and helping us promote cycling, and, um, we look forward to continue to work with the city as Waterloo becomes more and more a bicycle-friendly community.
Thank you for all of your work. And you're a president of the... Okay, next up, uh, Fair Housing Month. This is Tom here, Tom Hurstman. Nope. Hey.
Karen Kaiser.
Karen Kaiser, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes. All right. So, "City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas April 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the Title... Eight of the, my hand's shaking, sorry, of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Civil Rights Fair Housing Act, and whereas this act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental, or financing of property, whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and strengthened its enforcement procedures, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, to eliminate legal barriers to equal housing, and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental human right for all, and whereas individuals in the city have the right to choose where, where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, disability, gender identity, familial status, or national origin, and whereas the City of Waterloo fully supports the intent and purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and follows policies and practices in order to achieve its goal, now therefore, I, Ray Foyce, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month." And Karen, I'm sure you have a few words.
Just a few.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Kaiser. I'm here representing the Northeast Iowa Board of Realtors. I'm the chairperson for our diversity committee, and Mary back there is our CEO, but she's here to support me. But, um, anyway, we just want to thank you for the proclamation, and Realtors recognize the significance of the fair housing and reaffirm their commitment to upholding the fair housing law, as well as their commitment to offering equal professional service to all of their search for real property. Our National Association Plan Act, abbreviated, uh, Act, Accountability, Culture Change, and Training in Order to Ensure America's 1.5 million Realtors Are Doing Everything Possible to Protect Housing Rights in America. We'd like to thank you on behalf of the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors, and thank you for the support, the proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Karen, again, for the Realtors. All right, and finally, we have Global Love Day, and, uh, we will be emailing this out to Harold Becker after the proclamation, unless there's somebody here in place. Nope, okay. All right, "City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the Love Foundation Incorporated, a national prof, a ne, a nonprofit organization, has announced Global Love Day to facilitate and establishing love and peace on our planet, and whereas Global Love Day will establish a worldwide focus towards unconditionally loving each other as we love ourselves, and whereas we are one humanity on this planet, and whereas all life is interconnected and interdependent, and whereas all share in the universal bond of love, and whereas love begins with self-acceptance and forgiveness, and whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity, and whereas together we make a difference through love, and whereas the Love Foundation Incorporated invites mankind to declare May 1st, 2022, as Global Love Day, a day of forgiveness and unconditional love. Global Love Day will act as a model for all of us to follow each and every day. Now therefore, I, Ray Foyce, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2022, as Global Love Day in Waterloo, and invite all citizens to observe this day which honors the public cause for global love, world peace, and universal joy." Thank you. All right. Now, it is time for public comments. Uh, we do have one individual who called in, Sheila Beal.
Hi. I'm Sheila Beal. I live at 315 Gale Street, and I have two neighbors that are elderly. One is 78 years old and has scoliosis. The other neighbor lady is in her 80s, and I clean up their leaves for them, and I have back problems, and the easiest way for me to clean up the leaves is to blow them into the street, to the curb, and then I rake them all up. This is from fall. I don't know if you want to hand these around? Fall of 2021. It would be Gale Street and Zelmar, or Maxine and Zelmar. Then also, I have, um, I talked to Mr. Bozen about the street sweeper. I had a lady turn me into code enforcement that used to work for the city, and, um, nobody ever came back to see that I picked up the leaves. Anyway, I talked to Mr. Bozen about it, and he gave me four dates that the, uh, street sweeper went by, and I only seen the street sweeper one time, and it was in the fall, and I know it was before, kinda like right before the leaves started falling, so, you know, I got a copy of what he gave me, and then I also have, spring of '22, I drove down Zelmar Street to show you the leaves that did not get picked up. I mean, a lot of them are gone now, but there's still some there, and they're, you know, they're rotting, and they're black, and it's really nasty, so here's some more pictures. Anyway, I got turned into code enforcement, and I got fined twice by code enforcement, and the only letters I got in the mail were from the City of Waterloo. The initial, uh, the initial letters.
Thank you.
These two here. I received these two letters, and nothing else. Also, here are the letters. Here's my two neighbor ladies that I clean up for, and, um, the people that live right across the street from me, they're in their 50s. He, he lives out of town, she lives here. She's working all the time, so I, I do hers with mine because most of hers are on my side, so I don't have a tree in my yard. I have two flowering trees. I have a magnolia in my backyard, and I've got a Japanese maple on the left side that they shed flowers, and they shed them in the spring, so I usually, you know, just sweep them up. So, I don't have any leaves except for the neighbors that don't pick them up. Anyway, I got turned in by her first, and I never got any notice, and then all of a sudden, on one day, in my mailbox, all these appeared. And it said it was the 22nd of December, I believe, and it was that... I never showed up to court. I never got a notice in the mail, and I never got a certified letter for court, which I can prove that. I have here from the post office, the tracking number. I went down there today and told them I wanted my certified letter. When I went down there today, somebody else had signed for the letter, and I have a copy of that, too. Might have handed that to you already. Nope, I didn't. It's right here. And somebody falsified their name in my place. So, I called the police department, and Mr. Sullivan, an officer that's an investigator, he came out, and I explained to him everything, and he understands, too, that somebody had forged their name on federal documents, and, which is a federal offense. Court documents for the state is a state offense. Then I received a letter from Des Moines stating that they were gonna withhold my, my state income tax return. I used that money to pay my property tax. They're trying to bill me over almost $700 for two... Two code enforcement fines. They never came back to check to see that I picked them up. They never came back to see that I used my own bags. I bagged them all up, and my dad came from Evansdale with his truck, and we took them to the dump, 30 bags each load, which was two loads in his truck and one load in my Durango. So, you can see from fall on Zelmar Street where they did not pick them up out in the street, you can see the difference. I sweep up the sand, I sweep up the dirt, I sweep up anything that's laying there after I pick up the leaves and seeds and everything else that's fallen.
Thank you, Mr. Foyce.
Is there anything that you can...
You know, I, I just talked to Marty, and you, you're gonna have to go and have a process through the courts, and just get that figured out with, with some of those things.
With what court?
The district court.
You've gotta be kidding me. Somebody fraudently signed for my certified letter.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
It's too bad the post office don't keep their videotape a little longer, then we could find out who did that.
That's, that's what the post office was.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I will hire a federal attorney then.
All right, that was the only person who...
I want my pictures left and my papers.
Yeah. Yep. We're getting them for you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's the time for anybody else that would like to have, uh, non-agenda-related items, if you'd like to come up. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Don Henry, 2121 West Son Street, Waterloo. I just need to comment back, what I just heard, I think that's really sad that the code enforcement department spends so much time harassing people who turn around and take care of their wounds and lards, because there's not enough of that in the city, and there's enough houses that need to be repainted and things like that, that the code enforcement department's constantly harassing someone who can't afford it. What I came for today was, I'm trying to understand what is happening with Ridgway Avenue between, I would say Baltimore and Ainsborough, but I'm told it's Kimball and Ainsborough, as in the, now it's going to be an overlay, which I take to be asphalt, and there has been a study done. I know there's been lots of talk and rumor of a three-lane, or stay with the four-lane, or whatever we're gonna do. I don't know anyone that knows the answer to that, but, um, Ridgway is four-lane, but it's really already two-lane. You drive in the inside lanes, and if you wanna turn, you have to get in the outside lanes, because there's so many potholes. It's just a mess. Um, my son lives off of Ridgway. They have barely a curb like this. You wanna put another overlay down, that's just putting a Band-Aid on a gushing wound. It's not going to help. There's this, this should have been thought of many years ago, not just now. We're gonna take bids for something. The city is supposed to plan what they're going to do and take care of their city, their infrastructure and everything else. It doesn't all land in downtime. Uh, you've got Hoover, Lou Henry Schools right there, and those kids are made to walk on the street or in grass and cross a busy street. You just think that's really sad. I just think we can do better than that, and I'd like to see there be some discussion. I'm told that, I mean, the people are against it. I'd like to hear who those people are. Uh, I campaigned last year and talked to a lot of people, and maybe the conversation may, for Road 5, and for this entire city, it should be, because it is set, uh, thoroughfare for the south side of Waterloo. So, I wish there would be some conversation on there, that people would look into that before just, or stamping, oh, okay, it's okay, because we have to take care of this, this, and this. But we need to take care of our neighborhoods and our cities also, and keep our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I know we, we did have those conversations, Jamie Wright, and I know, uh, having had conversations with other individuals, we, we do have a plan on what we're doing with Ridgway.
Yeah, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. I think I've mentioned this before, that we are planning to put an overlay on Ridgway between Kimball and Ainsborough this summer. I can't tell you exactly when that's going to happen. We haven't bid the project yet, but, uh, we will be doing that this summer. We are going to be removing about two, the two and a half inches of the old asphalt surface that's out there. We're gonna grind that off. We're gonna be patching across where the bumps are that everybody drove over this winter. We're gonna be patching a bunch of those, and then we'll be putting a new two-inch surface back on top of it, so, um, again, it's a matter of funding and a lot of that to reconstruct it. It's about a $10 million project through there. To widen it, to go to four lanes, and put in a sidewalk and bike trail that has been discussed, I think a year ago with the trap, with the study that was done by, uh, traffic, or traffic engineer. It, it's just, it's a much bigger project than just being able to reconstruct it and widen it a little bit. So, we are looking at, uh, long-term to do some of that, but that's a number of years down the road right now.
Thank you. Yep, and I know that's, I, I've contacted you a few times about this project, and that's the same answer that we've had, so, oh.
One other thing I should mention, it is going back four lanes. It's gonna be striped exactly the same way it is, so it's going back four lanes. So, we're not changing anything, we're not going to three lanes, anything like that, because there were, uh, at the public meeting that was held, there were disagreements with the folks that were there, and whether or not it should be three lanes or four lanes. Right now, it's going back four lanes with the other one. Thank you. Mr. Dreier.
David Dreier, 3145 West Forest Street. This lady brought up something that, that I had thought about for a long time also. There were supposed to be more public meetings. Mr. Knutson just mentioned that the, at, at the public meeting, they were promised at that time that there were gonna be more meetings, and there never were. So, I have to agree with this lady that, that, you know, we've been left in the dark. Why? We're the people that pay your wages, we're the people that pay for that road reconstruction. Why are we not getting more input and more information? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dreier. Anybody else? I think at the time, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, consensus was that we were... Because of the cost, that we were going to do the asphalt overlay instead, and look towards the future of, of doing that, so I think that's why the. That's not necessarily, I mean, not necessarily having any further, uh, discussions on it, okay? Going a second time on the.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, so. Uh, transparency is really important, and, and folks like to, to tell us things about what we are, aren't doing, or what we're stamping, so. Um, in an effort to continue to be transparent, um. I will be having a public meeting, uh, this Thursday at the Waterloo Public Library in Meeting Room A. It's from 5:30 to 6:30. It's open to anyone who wants to come. It's not just, uh, War II representatives, uh, citizens, excuse me. Um, Mr. Knutson will be there. He's graciously decided to give up his time to come to the Thunderdome. Uh, and then I have also spoken with Camp, Captain Duncan and Officers Jasper and McGee, and they are our two neighborhood patrol officers. So they are going to attempt to be there based on their schedules. Um, to be there, we have the room for about an hour. Um, so it's time to, you know, voice whatever concerns you have. Meet our neighborhood police officers, ask Jamie, whatever you need to ask Jamie. Um, and I am planning on having these once a month, uh, now that we have sort of begun to move on from COVID and it's safe to start doing these things again. I'm looking forward to having them, so I hope to see you all Thursday afternoon.
Thank you. Any other questions here for Tim?
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. As long as we're using Jamie's name, I'll ask some questions to Jamie, if you have a moment, sir. That, that, it just, it just.
Yeah.
Sparks something up here, so. I, I, a quick question on, on the workout by the theme park, then, because we had phases. First phase and, and, and then, are we deviating from our phase schedule? Because I, I'm understanding that we are now working, gonna start the roundabout north on, on the new, they named the Port Road. To the inters- to the center of the intersection of the KOA.
Correct.
Now, was that Phase 2, or is that down the road? Because I, are we dealing with the FEMA? Are we dealing with?
Long, long story short, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer, long story short, we are still waiting on a FEMA permit for the bridge work. Had everything gone according to plan, the way we originally were hoping. We would have finished, um, the section from the theme park entrance to 218 last fall. And then our contractor could have been working on the bridge over the winter, over the winter of 21, 22. And then we would be finishing up. Once that was done, then we'd be moving on to the roundabout. It hasn't happened that way, just because we are still waiting on a permit for, from FEMA. Um, still don't have it, so the next best thing to do then is to move down to, to keep the contractor moving. To move them down to Hess and, and the intersection here and start on the roundabout. So, again, it was all contingent, and our plans were bid that way, but it was all contingent upon our FEMA permit. And we're going on a year, waiting on it.
Uh, that was my next question, on how long have we been waiting for this, and how often do we follow up with FEMA? To see where they're at on it.
I s- I sent an email, I got an email from our consultant. Thursday, Friday, the end of last week, asking them, I'd asked them what the status update was, and they said they had heard from FEMA. Within the last two weeks that we're verifying some addresses. We had to do some things to. Send out letters, letting some folks know that the flood plain was changing in there, so they were verifying that. We had sent those to the correct addresses, but that was the last. This is about the fourth time we've submitted things to FEMA and they've come back. Um, asking for another bit of information or things like that, so.
And, and lastly, with the, with how this is gonna affect the KOA and the, and the water park and Birch. Um, especially trying to get. Uh, this, this camping season, getting, getting the campers in their, in their big motorhomes there, diverting around crossroads. Are we working, are we working with Birch to try to minimize their disruption to, because they run a shuttle. From the campground to the casino to the water park, and now it'll be to the new theme park. And it's, it's a pretty short trip. It's a quick turnaround that they just, they run it every 15 minutes. But if we have to divert them to. Down the Port Road to San Martin, to 218, to Shawless, to come back to do that, are we working with them at all to try to minimize that?
I've been in touch with, with, uh, both Gary and Becky Birch, as well as the manager at the KOA campground. To make sure that we're putting up additional signage that they have requested, and that should be going up. Prior to us starting the roundabout, um, at Hess and Shawless there. The issue with the roundabout is we are cutting that thing down about seven feet, so there is no way I can keep traffic through there. So the only place to do that is to run them around. I did have a conversation with, with Birch's about another option, but that didn't. They had some concerns on their end, so right now we're left with going around to. Up the port, to San Martin, to 218, and back down.
And, and that, that's one of my concerns, because that, that area that's gonna be closed off is the entrance for all their employees. They come in off of, off of La Porte right there.
We are not going that far north.
No, I was told from the KOA that you were going to the, to, to, to half the entrance of the KOA.
When we get to the, that, that's a separate project. You are correct, but that is when we do the Port Road, and that is a separate project that we have not bid yet.
Okay, that's.
That is, that'll be a separate one where we will go from where we are stopping at the north end of the roundabout here. With the Shawless project that is currently bid and out for construction right now. When we go from, on the port, we will be going from that point. Past the water parks, employee entrance, past KOA, and on up to about Highway 20 is where we've got it set now. But that's an upcoming project, and we did meet with. At our stakeholder meeting about a month ago, the manager of KOA was there. We did talk to him about Fox, about. Access and things like that, and he was satisfied with the access at that point. Um, but we were gonna go from Shawless up to about the center of the KOA driveway.
Um, when would, when would, do you estimate that being planned, that portion of it?
Well, it's under design right now, and so it'll come down to. Oh, I believe it's next May or June we're looking at.
It's not gonna be this, it's not gonna be this camping.
It's not this camping season, no. The other part of it is, no, I don't want to shut off the Hess Road and have that roundabout and then turn around and close off. Stuff even further to the north, no, there's.
Okay.
No intent of doing.
Well, that, that would minimize their, their disruption, because if, if you're gonna. Keep that employee entrance open off of, off of the new La Porte, there is a road that, that ties into their parking lot.
Yes.
So they would be able to shuttle people through to, to get their, their patrons to the casino, to the water park, to the theme park this year.
Yes, and that's one of the things that we had talked about with Birch's, yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Jamie, any other?
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Um, Jamie, you can rest. You can rest. Um, so as we know, April is coming to an end, and if you do live in Ward 3, we are having our monthly ward meeting on Sunday from 5 to 6. And we are still doing Zoom at the moment, but if anyone wants to do in person, I'm open to that. The link is on my website, neawilder.com. There will be a spot for our past meeting, our past meeting minutes and the agenda for the coming up meetings. And so again, that is coming up on Sunday here from 5 to 6, and the Zoom link is on my website at neawilder.com. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chass.
Thank you. Um, echoing my colleagues here, uh, the Ward 1. Uh, ward meeting that we've been having, uh, since January will yet again be here the final Saturday of this month. It will be in this room at noon. Um, I invite you to come. I'd love to, uh, speak with any, any citizens and give them updates on what's happening from up here. Um, I do have one question for Jamie.
Oh, Jamie, good. I'm sorry, Jamie. I spoke too soon.
Yeah, there we go. Um, for the bike trail on Fletcher. Um, how, so Fletcher and, uh, where the, I can't think of anything, I'm so sick, so sorry about that.
63.
Thank you, 63. Um. Do we have an, an update on that, on when that could possibly be reopened?
Oh, you're talking the, the 63 trail with the collapsed bridges?
Yes.
We are in design right now. We're working on the design as we speak. Um. Assuming council approved the CIP, and the funding is done, and. As soon as that's, we have the funding there, then we can go out to bid. So that's probably May-ish, Ju- well, excuse me, probably June-ish, somewhere in there. Um, that we'll be going out for bid. We'll need to work with Michelle to make sure that we aren't incurring costs prior to actually having the, the funding in hand. Um, but hopefully we can go out to bid in June. Work would maybe start the end of July, or middle, end of July, somewhere in there. It's. Depending upon the weather, hopefully by Thanksgiving, hopefully sooner. We're just needed. I, I don't know yet. We'll just have to see, so.
Okay.
But it is, it is, we are working to get it done this construction season.
Okay, thank you.
Any further?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, and, uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. With the addition of 1A1 informal those payments. Uh, for Monday, April 11th, 2022, in the amount of $2,978,903.21. And for Monday, April 18th, 2022, $1,841,890.79.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Right, and I would like to, um, I'm not sure if she is here tonight, but Brittany Hoyer, to the position of Human Resources Administrative Secretary.
She's not here.
Not here, okay, and then for appointments, uh, we have two appointments. New appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, Hector Salamanca Arroyo. Arroyo, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I apologize, and Ivan Valvich, uh, Valčić, I am struggling with names, I apologize. So, thank you for, Hector, thank you for being here this evening and, uh, for your commitment to preserving our history in Waterloo. Thank you. All right, public hearings, number 2 has been canceled and rescheduled for June 6th. Can I get somebody to take number 3?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the fiscal year 2022 wastewater treatment plant. And lift stations mowing contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is open on the wastewater treatment plant and lift station and the public comment, and this. On the second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
Like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
We had two bidders. Wilson Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa, they provided 5% bid security. Option A is $925. And $2,575. Option B is $360 and $800. Option C is $400 and $900. And option D is $33,145. Our second bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided was option A, $1,599.75 and $2,500. Option B is $500 and $1,500. Option C is $600 and $1,500. And option D is $55,196.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to Wilson Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of option A. $925 and $2,575. Option B, $360 and $800. Option C, $400 and $900. And option D, $33,145. Approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 wastewater treatment plant lift stations. Mowing contract and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Council, any questions on this? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number 4, please.
Actually, that's a roll call, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Roll call. You're right, you're right.
Mr. Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
M- Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Keeping me on my toes. All right, now number 4.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's a 2022 and 23 residential lots. Miscellaneous area mowing, lot maintenance services contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any comments on lawn mowing? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans. Specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. Okay. We had one bidder for this project, B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. Bid option A, $12.99. Bid option B, $57, and he provided a 5% bid security.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a word of bid to B&amp;B Lawn Care Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with the 2022. And 2023 residential. Lots miscellaneous area mowing and lot maintenance services contract. For the amount of $12.99 per lot option A. Lots under one acre and $57 per hour for option B, lots one acre or more. Approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, 5?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for FY 2023. Complaint, complaint mowing with complaint slowing removal contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an open hearing for, a public hearing for the complaint mowing. Public comments, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file roll and write the comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera. And authorizing to proceed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
We've had five bidders for this project. Our first bidder was A Thompson Construction Company of Waterloo, Iowa. All bidders provided a 5% bid security. Their bid is alternate A, $4,300. Alternate B. $3,200. Alternate C, $90. Alternate D, $90. Our second bidder was P&amp;J Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid was alternate A, $1,050. Alternate B, $1,150. Alternate C, $25. And alternate D, $25. Our third bidder was Premium Lawn Care of Hudson, Iowa. Their bid was alternate A, $4,200. Alternate B, $3,000. Alternate C, $60. And alternate D, $75. Our fourth bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid was alternate A, $3,850. Alternate B, $2,750. Alternate C, $79. And alternate D, $79. Our last bidder was A1 Property Services LLC of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid was alternate A, $5,000. Alternate B, $3,500. Alternate C, $75. And alternate D, $95.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving, uh, a word of bid to P&amp;J Operations LLC of Waterloo, Iowa. Option A, $1,050 per occurrence. Option B, $1,150 per occurrence. And option C, $25 per man. per occurrence. And option C, $25 per man hour. And to B&amp;B Lawn Care, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, for option D, $79 per man hour, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 complaint mowing and complaint snow removal contract and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, you're right.
Thank you, I do have a, I appreciate that. I do have a comment because I'm concerned, and I did address it with our city attorney, that we're $3,000 to $5,000 difference in the bids. Because our low bid's at $1,000, and then they range anywhere between $4,000 and $5,000 plus. It's one of two things. I mean, either, I would hope this contractor did their due diligence and bid it appropriately. I'd hate to have them come back because they've missed something. I have an issue that these other contractors would bid it that high. Because just, if we can bid it, if we can get it done for $1,000, I have an issue that everyone else is $3,000, $4,000, and $5,000 higher. And as long as, and I think our city attorney and code enforcement is comfortable with this contractor unless Mr. Peterson wants to address it, but I was told by him that they seem comfortable with this contractor. So, but I am concerned that we're, are we getting realistic bids from other people at times? Thank you.
That makes sense. Any further comment? Okay, all right, roll call.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Okay, can we take and open up six, seven, eight, and nine? We have to read each one as they are written, though, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Greider.
Can I make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds- ECP-1, the issuance not to exceed $11,600,000 in general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes? I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds GCP-2, the issuance not to exceed $700,000, general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes. A motion to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds GCP-3, the issuance not to exceed $700,000, general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes. And finally, a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds ECP-UR-4, the issuance not to exceed $800,000, general obligation bonds for essential corporate urban renewal purposes.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for public hearings on our bonds. Any public comments?
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I have to apologize to three of the people in the council that apparently I have your emails incorrect. But earlier today, I sent out a email, and I hope the ones that I sent it to did receive it. Since I missed three of you, I'm bringing it up tonight since it's on the council agenda. I noticed in the current agenda, there is a request for authorization of bonds, public, in the public part, six, seven, eight, and nine, in resolution 11, 12, and 13, which I understand you have already approved. However, on the consent agenda, is a request for a release of unspent bond funds from a while back, items nine and 11, at $875,000 each. Weren't those funds taken into consideration before you continue to borrow more? Weren't you continuing to pay interest on them while you take on more interest expense? It seems you need more funds, okay? What about releasing those funds to pay down the debt or back down the new borrowing? Do any of you really know how much money you've borrowed? How much you owe, your debt is, including the state revolving fund, which is not included in the count against our bonding limit? If you live in Waterloo, as they say, we're all in it together. So, give it some, give us some answers, not hide the two facts. Many of the employees that work for the city of Waterloo don't live here, don't pay taxes here. They could help relieve some of our load, because all of us that do live here and do pay taxes here are paying all of those expenses. Thank you, we thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on our bonds going a second time? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we have to do number six a little bit differently because it has an extra resolution. Mr. Greider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Protem, I would like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action on item number six, general obligation bonds ECP-1, the issuance of not to exceed $11,600,000 in general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $11,600,000, general obligation bonds, and levying a tax for the payment thereof. Resolution instituting proceeding, no, sorry. Okay. A resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $700,000, general obligation bonds. Resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance not to exceed $700,000, general obligation bonds. And a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for issuance of not to exceed $800,000, general obligation bonds.
Second. Okay, I know I messed it up the last time I did this, I just want to make sure. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, resolutions. Can I have somebody take 10 through 13?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Bozen?
Like to adopt a resolution approving a Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau Board recommendation of many grants to Iowa Corrections Association 2022 in the amount of $3,000, and Colo Folk Dance Festival in the amount of $3,000. Number 11 is adopting a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and dispersment agreement by and between the City of Waterloo and Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing a payment of $8,105,000 taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, series 2022A, of the City of Waterloo under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. You want me to go all the way to 14 or 13?
13, yes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan dispersment agreement and between the City of Waterloo and Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing a payment of $4,202,000 taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, series 2022B, of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, under the provisions of the Iowa Code, and providing for a method of payment of said notes and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. And number 13 is adopting a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and dispersment agreement by and between the City of Waterloo and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing a payment of $1,036,000 of taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, series 2022C, of the City of Waterloo, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Next, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on resolutions 10 through 13. Any public comments on those going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
So, just want to comment on 11, 12, and 13. So, last fall, I had a great opportunity to tour the wastewater treatment facility. And these loans go to pay for one of our biggest city services that we don't really think about because it's not very attractive, which is moving waste from our homes to other places. But when it doesn't work, we definitely notice it. So, I'm very glad to see us continuing to invest in improving and expanding our wastewater system. And I know Mr. Billman will be back for another tour sometime soon, so.
Any other? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
14 through 17, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Amos.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering of Omaha, Nebraska, in conjunction with the upgrade to adaptive track signal technology on Logan Avenue Project, DOT number STGB-SWAP-8155, parentheses, 781, parentheses, dash dash SH dash 07, in the amount not to exceed $23,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And the 15 resolution approving construction plans to the, for the private sanitary sewer extension serving 146 Martin Road condominiums, as submitted by Helen Engineering, and surveying LTD of Cedar Falls, Iowa, and sewage treatment agreement, DNR Form 29, parentheses, November 00, parentheses, with the Department of Natural Resources and final acceptance of construction plan, subject to the review and acceptance by the Department of Natural Resources, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Resolution approving addendum number one to a professional services agreement of, with Robinson Engineering Company of Independence, Iowa, originally executed in March 16, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $5,980, in conjunction with the Delane Creek watershed assessment, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And 17, resolution approving the development agreement with Vaxone LLC for the construction of an infill lot located north of 1600 Lark Lane, including $5,000 in incentive payment upon completion of a new home, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comments on those items going a second time? Counsel? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, 18 through 20, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. 18 is resolution approving a request by the City of Waterloo for the final plat of Westport, a five-lock commercial subdivision located in the M-1 Light Industrial District, east of 3338 West Airline Highway. 19 is a resolution concurring with the determination of the city planner approving a proposed change to the approved site plan for the S-1 Shopping Center District for the construction of a convenience store slash gas station, Quickstar, of approximately 10,000 square feet with 78-stall parking lot located near the northeast corner of Kimball Avenue and East Ridgeway Avenue as a minor site plan amendment. And 20 is a resolution approving an employment contract with Dr. Joel Fitzgerald for the position of police chief, effective April 19, 2022, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. We have a motion and a second for 18, 19, and 20. Public comments on any of those going a second?
Mayor, members of the council, for still of 175 Huntington Road, I would like to speak to number 20. I think it would be nice if the citizens of Waterloo knew ahead of time what was in this area and what it's spelled out, so that we could have a voice in this. This is our city. We pay for everything. And I think we should know what we're paying for and what we are getting. That includes the present contract and what this would add to that present contract. There are many, many people who ask me what it is. I don't know. I would, I think it needs to be before the public, so that it can voice their opinion before we take a vote. Thank you. David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I also have a comment on item 20. I did look it over, and I guess my question is, as Forrest has said, that what was in the old contract, were there contracts such as this for the previous police chiefs, all the way back to when the first police chief started here? Or was it on a year-to-year basis? I notice in here, this is a four-year contract. So, was that the precedence in the past, or was it the year-to-year? Because also in the contract, it states that the police chief serves at the pleasure of the mayor. If the mayor changes in three years, Mr. Fitzgerald has another year on his contract, and the present, the new mayor doesn't care for Mr. Fitzgerald, where do we get ourselves into in a situation like that? When the council changes, when the mayor changes, we have a possibility of a conflict that creates a financial burden possibly for the city. And I guess, on all of these things, this is my personal feeling, you ask for public comments, but we get up here, we make our comment, and we don't see any change in the vote. So, what difference does our comment make? I see.
Thank you. I think as far as, just to, no, you can, you're okay. As far as some of the things in which you spoke, I can't speak to precedents on, you know, if we've done a four-year agreement with our chiefs in the past. But what I can tell you is, if mayor or any of the council members do change, there is a just and due process that's written within this agreement that if something does happen, it would, we have that language in there, so that in case something were to happen, mayor and stuff. No, not, if there is, if chief leaves in the next four years on his own, there is no, it's not there. So, it's if he doesn't have it, then, yep. All right, listen.
Dean Henry, 2121 West 7th Street, Waterloo. I wish that in last year's going on, we met last year, and I thought that many of us had the same idea that we wanted to make them know what we're doing. Transparency, there's no transparency. I'm sorry, my personal opinion is no transparency. These things get brought up, you have to find the site, you have to figure it out, you have to read 11 pages to find out what you really know. And in no meetings, on Facebook pages, or anything else, do I see anything that's pertinent to what's going on in city council. What is pertinent to the chief of police's new salary? It's a big change for a lot of people. It caught people off guard, but it just slides through. And I think that's what we need not to do. Should be out there last month or the month before, whenever you knew these type of budget items were going to happen, and let the people know. Let the people decide. The people voted for you to do their job. And please do it. Don't just bobblehead it to whatever someone says, this is what we're going to do. Thank you for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Oh, wait, one second. Just want to give any other public comments? All right, Mr. Greider.
So, that was fun. I do think that it behooves us to be transparent. And I certainly agree with the idea that we did not receive this final contract until 11:41 this morning. And I can only speak for myself that I worked all day, and I did not see this contract before I got into council at 3:30. And I agree that transparency is important. That's why I'm having public meetings. That's why I have a newsletter that some of the public in this very room are signed up for. But this item on the agenda was added on Friday, and it was changed today. So, I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until we can have an executive session with the mayor to understand where these numbers came from. I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Fitzgerald as our police chief, but I want to know where these numbers came from. I would like to know why we're moving our police chief as the ninth largest city to just behind the mine, which is the largest city. I just want to know through the process by which this is happening. So, I agree with transparency. And so, I would like to make that motion to postpone this until we can have an executive session to further learn more about how we got through this process.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to postpone until we can have an executive session.
Postpone item 20.
Postpone item, yes. Ms. Henry, your 10 is up, thank you. So, so, so we have a motion to postpone item 20 until all such time we can have an executive session on it.